I'm Nick Armstrong and you're watching Dear Fort Collins, a podcast featuring the people that make Fort Collins a wonderful place to live. This series of episodes is all about the election that's happening in November 2025. And we're interviewing all of the different candidates for mayor, city council, and PSD school board. And we want to hear from them in their own words about why they're running, what they care about, and you then can be more informed about who you're voting for when it's time to fill out your ballot. With ranked choice voting, it's really difficult to know sometimes who your candidates are and what order you're going to rank them in. So I hope these series of episodes really help you figure out which candidates best align with your interests and needs. And as we do these interviews, I want you to know that I have given the candidates access to the questions in advance. I try to ask all of the candidates the same questions, or at least give them an opportunity to answer the same questions in the same kind of way. And there's very minimal editing on any of these episodes. So unless there was an errant sneeze or a cat jumping on someone's lap, you're hearing from the candidates in their own words. I do have a quick disclaimer to give you that I serve on the Parks and Recreation Board for the City of Fort Collins, and my opinions on this show are my own. They're not the position of the board or of the city. And I have also advised a number of the candidates about their campaigns, and in some cases have either helped with their campaigns or made a donation here or there. I do my absolute best to make sure that they all get fair treatment, that there aren't any favorites being played, and that also we're asking them the same types of questions, and they have an opportunity to answer those in kind. I hope that you enjoy these episodes and that they help you become a more informed voter in the upcoming election. And if you do have any questions, concerns, or comments, please let me know and reach out on the Dear Fort Collins website. I'm always happy to hear from you. And some of the questions that you'll hear me ask of the candidates have been submitted by listeners and watchers just like you, folks who are fans of the show and want to know more about particular candidates and their positions on particular things. So with that, let's get on with the show. On this episode of Dear Fort Collins, we have Zoel Lane, who is running for a seat in District Five. Welcome to the show! How's your campaign going, Zoel?
It's going really well. I'm having a lot of fun. We have a ton of volunteers that are having a lot of fun. And so it's just, it's a really great way to be engaged with the community.
Amazing. Well, what motivated you to run for office?
So essentially, I'm a young professional here in the city. I decided that, you know, Fort Collins was where I was going to settle down and start a family and maybe buy a house. And then I very quickly realized, very few people actually make enough money to do those things. So we are watching affordability go way down, cost of living go way up. And I'm one of those people that I'm looking at, if I want those things, if I want to have kids, am I going to have to live 45 minutes out of town and commute every day? Or is there a way to make the city affordable so people like me can stay here? And so I really felt like we have been trying, a lot of different people have been trying different ways and different pathways to make that happen. And I think that it really does start and end with city council. And so having people that are really going to champion that is important.
We'll dive into questions about affordability in a minute, but I want to know about what unique experience that you're going to bring to the table.
So I immigrated here from Canada, and I've worked in nonprofits before I now work at CSU. So I've been doing work at, from like small-scale community, how to make things affordable and how to create programs for people so that if they come from a different socioeconomic background, where they don't necessarily have material means to get involved, they have that provided for them, or there's different ways that they can get involved within their community, all the way up to like larger scale, just lived experience and being involved with more international work. It's been really eye-opening on all levels, how like my personal experience has weaved into my professional experience. I also rent here in the city, and District Five is predominantly renters, and we haven't had that voice on council in this district. And so I think that's actually a really important thing, that the people who are representing the community have skin in the game on like the most vital issues.
Besides the aspect of being a renter, what makes you especially qualified to represent District Five?
I would say a lot of it has to do with, are you even willing to do it? So that's, it's an interesting way to phrase the question, because I don't think that there's just one type of experience. I think that there is lived experience, there is on paper experience, there's, have you gotten like 60 million degrees from different universities? Or like, have you actually built a business from scratch? Like, there are so many ways that people become qualified. And so I think that largely, what I bring to the table is that I'm someone who has bought tooth and nail. So I started in Canada, working in the service industry. I took care of my grandmother full-time while I tried to go to school, and just essentially chipped away at my schooling when I could afford it over years, which is like largely the experience that people go through in the working class. When I immigrated here, it was really scary. And so having to navigate all those systems, you really, you become really adept at how to navigate different systems. And then I've been working on taking those kind of learned skills and experiences and then applying them to like my nonprofit work here and my volunteer work and just getting involved in the community. It's, so it's a mixture. It's a mixture of just like the practice skills of knowing how to apply and administer grants, working in HR, and how do you talk to people and what the nuances of like contracts are, to like being pretty well-versed in seeing environmental sustainability across not only different cities, but different countries. And being able to bring that all to the table and say, I love Fort Collins, I want to push Fort Collins forward and really make it a place where I can be, where my neighbors can be and stay, and that we all thrive here together.
What does Fort Collins mean to you specifically?
So I really see it as like, it's home. Like, I remember talking to people when I first moved here, and I was like, I've never felt more at home somewhere than I do here. I love where I was born, and like, I think it's beautiful, but like this, I feel connected with my job and the community and the environment here in a way that I think is so unique. I don't feel like many cities in the US have what Fort Collins has, and it's magical. And I want that to continue forward.
Can you share a specific project or issue that you'd like to tackle first if elected?
So honestly, affordable housing is the big one, because I think it is impacting the most amount of people. And I know I talk about being a renter, but it's not just the rental affordability that's missing, it's also the kind of missing middle-income entry-level housing for people here in the city. And so that's absolutely priority number one, because that's going to be a huge factor in what makes Fort Coll-- can we continue on? Or do we have a whole bunch of young people or essential workers having to leave?
What do you see as the meaningful levers that you can pull on as a city council person to address the affordable housing situation here in Fort Collins?
Yeah, so I think a few levers are, we need to expand zoning along key transit corridors. So if we're expanding zoning in like very poorly navigated with the transit system, single-family houses, that's not very conducive to making the system run. So we need to look at, where do we have transit already? Where can we expand transit to reasonably? And then in those areas, what can we do to increase the amount of housing we can build there? So that's mid-to-high-density zoning, that's mixed-use zoning, so that people can grab some groceries or drop their kids off at daycare without having to travel 20, 30 minutes. That's also sometimes amending the parking requirements for those structures. So we don't necessarily want sprawling parking lots when we're building up. We want to make sure that if we're accommodating with the transit corridors, we don't necessarily need to have two parking spots for every unit in the building, right? So if we're looking at all of that, that's a good start. We also need to make sure that we're not overburdening businesses who are trying to build those for us. So we do need to look at expediting some permits for the mid-to-head, high-density housing to begin with. And then as we see the city start to have that supply, we can look at, how can we now leverage that experience and make it easier across the board? Or what changes can we make across the board? I also think that a really key aspect to this is also looking at what minimum wage is. So if we're creating affordable housing, but our minimum wage is still $10 below a living wage, that's not necessarily sustainable. And I don't think any amount of affordable housing could outpace that difference. So I would like to adopt something that Boulder did, which is, was something that the city council said they were going to do and then did not follow through on, but to instill a multi-year plan to start raising that minimum wage. And I'd also like to see it come up for tipped workers. That can be a little controversial, but I do think it's incredibly important. And having both that increase for tipped workers and regular minimum wage workers, as well as some time for businesses to accommodate that change.
So I hear a support for businesses. Talk to me about how you intend to balance the impact of increased minimum wages on small businesses versus the larger folks who can kind of come in and just absorb that cost? And how do we keep Fort Collins competitive in that way of not passing on those costs to the consumers who are, you know, when you talk about like plastic bag bans and things like that, we're already like, oh, well, I'm just going to shop in the next municipality over, and then it became Colorado law, and everybody kind of just dug in. So talk to me about, how do you balance the impact on small businesses versus the larger businesses when it comes to something like minimum wage?
So I think I'm, there will have to be shifts with some small businesses if we're raising minimum wage. You can't necessarily get away from that, but I do think that there are things that we can do to try to minimize that impact and maybe shift some of what would be like a heavy impact away from the small business owner specifically, so that we can still shop local predominantly. So one of the things that I have seen is that yes, large corporations can more readily absorb those increases, but when you actually look at the numbers, there are small things that businesses can do. There are small incremental raises to prices that can happen at a business level to accommodate a small shift up in what minimum wage would be for a tipped worker, let's say. I know that it is a difficult thing to navigate, and that's why I think having like a concrete plan over time is important. I also think that if we're looking at what other areas we can improve cost expenditures for businesses, so maybe that increase to minimum wage doesn't hurt as much, we can look at, well, if there's more residential space for rent, sorry, if there's more business space for rent here in the city, it's the same thing with rental apartments that are residential. When you see supply go up, they, the rent comes down a little bit, because you can't, it's supply and demand. So if we are allowing for more mixed-use zoning, that premium on space hopefully comes down a little bit, and we don't see rent hikes on our businesses the same way we're seeing them on residential properties and individual people, right? I also think that there's a large barrier to entry for starting your own business. So allowing more city subsidies and expedited processes for people to enter the business space and perhaps expand and do some of that just in general administrative work with less overhead could be a way that we can kind of reallocate some funds and also give businesses a break. As well as, I think that it's important that we also look at, how are we covering, if someone wants to go into business for themselves, are they being stopped, or what kind of insurance premium are they now carrying to support their family and to provide medical coverage for their family? And so that's one of the reasons why social programs are so important, because we need to be able to protect people that want to go into business for themselves, or have recently lost their job for whatever reason, to then have a little bit of a safety net so that they're just not paying out of pocket, declaring bankruptcy, and struggling in that way.
So knowing that the City of Fort Collins has faced a year after year sales tax slump, and now is kind of flattened it out, what do you anticipate as a way to incorporate better support for small businesses and get folks to shop locally, as you alluded to?
So I genuinely, I know a lot of people my age that can't afford to shop locally because they don't make enough. So I genuinely do think that this is an issue where it's what comes first, the chicken or the egg? Like, are we, are we not shopping locally as much as we should be because we can't afford it? And then how do we kind of incorporate that? So I do think that raising minimum wage will allow consumers to actually choose where they're spending their money more than they're able to right now, and they will have the option to shop locally in a way that they don't necessarily. And the raises we're talking about as well, it's not like suddenly someone's inherited $100,000, $1 million. It is a little bit of an increase to their quality of life so they can put food on the table. And fundamentally, when I look at that, it's, can they afford like a little splurge? Can they afford not to be clipping as many coupons? Can they be shopping ethically? We have such a large base of people here in Fort Collins who care about shopping locally and ethically and want to be shopping locally and ethically, that I do think if we're allowing the consumers within our market, who are also the essential workers, the ability to choose, they are going to reinvest that money.
So we're going to come back to the affordability question in just a minute. What do you think the role the city should play in, in supporting the arts and nonprofits, and especially programs and organizations that aren't part of the official city initiative should be?
So I think it's important that there's collaboration and work there, and that the city supports those things. I also do think that we're falling into a bit of a pattern where the city over-re relies on nonprofits and doesn't necessarily support them in the way that they need to be supported to actually give the essential functions to the city that the city's expecting. So I do think that on top of better support for our partners and nonprofits in the arts, we also need to have more city-owned initiatives that are collaborating with those people to work in tandem, so that we aren't expecting like miracle results on a shoestring budget from people.
And do you see that that is in conflict with any of the other priorities that you've mentioned, in terms of how we spend the sales tax dollars that do come in? Or are you looking at additional funding mechanisms to make sure that those nonprofits and other arts organizations, other things like that, are fully funded, either through city grants or other things like that?
So I think it's a combination of the two. I absolutely think that there might be room to look at where city funds are currently being spent and reallocated based on priority. So with affordability being a kind of top-level concern, that's obviously something that when we're looking at funding, we do have a considerable amount of funding for it, but we would like to perhaps reallocate more. And then really going through the budget and looking at, what are we perhaps overspending on? What redundancies could be taken out, maybe with some of like our consultancy budget? Like, could we be, could we look at the resource of local talent and education and people who are involved in the community, involved in those spaces, to perhaps be more heavily involved in advisory positions in a way that would allow us to not only be reinvesting that money into the community, and perhaps maybe spend a little bit less than hiring outside companies, while also just encouraging people within the community to really have a more active voice in the direction that we're going in? And then, so to then circle back to your question, I don't see it as in conflict. I see those arts programs and those social programs and supporting the small businesses here and supporting affordability for families here and the working-class people as very much one in the same. Like, we are not thriving if our vulnerable communities are not also thriving with us. I don't necessarily subscribe to the mindset that if I'm doing this good thing for someone, or if the council is doing this good thing for someone, that's in direct conflict with this other good act. Like, we can all move forward together.
The question, I think, is more related to the idea of, how do we prioritize when it comes to looking at those different aspects of our community? And what I'm hearing you say is that it is primarily a question of affordability and accessibility of the city writ large, that folks have to be able to contribute meaningfully here and have a living wage and a comfortable wage that then allows them to do other things that would be useful. And by extension, that that would then help with offsetting the decreases in sales tax from folks not choosing to shop locally and such. Is that accurate?
I will also say, I do think that if, if we are opening up more transit routes and more mixed-use zoning for people as well, and they have more convenient local options to shop at, that's another way to encourage people to kind of shop locally and raise that local sales tax again. Because I know like, the convenience fee of however much more milk would be at a local grocer, if it was like just down the street, or even in the bottom of my building, versus me looking around at what the closest chain grocery store is, and then driving five, 10 minutes out of the way. So yeah, I think that when we look at a lot of these issues here in the city, it's so interconnected. It's really hard to say, oh yes, no, it's just this one thing and it will have no ripple effects, because a lot of the good things we need to do will actually have those positive ripples across the community.
So what do you believe is Fort Collins' biggest infrastructure challenge right now, and how would you like to address it?
Do you mind if I ask you for clarification on that?
Sure.
So when you're talking about infrastructure, like I, my mind immediately goes to more so like transit and actual city planning for infrastructure? Is that what you mean by that? Or were you hoping to have a different take on that question?
No, it's open-ended on purpose. I want to see which direction you take it, because there's a lot of different ways to talk about infrastructure, whether it's road size, or bike lanes, or whatever else you want to talk about. Tell me about what that question means to you, and where you see Fort Collins needing to meaningfully improve. And I think that also is true across districts, right? Because the answer for infrastructure in District One, for instance, is, well, we don't have a connection to the larger trail network, so of course, we want some of the infrastructure that would lead to alternative modes of transit. But for District Five, y'all have bike lanes galore. So that might not be such a big consideration. So I'd love to hear, from your perspective, what you believe that Fort Collins' biggest infrastructure challenges and how you would like to address it.
Sure. Um, well, looking at Districts Five specifically, a lot that I've heard as I've been knocking doors, is that there are really key transit gaps that we have. So you hear this a lot, just the general, like, there's a lack of east-west bus lines. And so one of the things that I really think is that we need to make sure that we are, we have the max line, which is great, but we need to close up some of the transit gaps that are in District Five, so that the people kind of on the outskirts, nearer to the foothills, and some of, there's a lot of schools around there. Like, a lot of parents have mentioned that it takes forever to bring their children in and out, because it's, they have to walk to the bus and then get on the bus and then take the bus. And the buses don't run frequently out here. So we need to increase the actual rate at which the buses are coming. This is something that like, I'm fortunate that I'm just close enough that there are some like 30-minute buses, but if I were out any further, I wouldn't be able to take the bus at all, because I'm physically disabled. I can't actually stand out there for that long. And I know there's a lot of other people that are in my position. So I'd like to see closing up those gaps, increasing some of the rates at which buses are going. And I think that also tackles a larger Fort Collins problem of, there's a lot of traffic now, and a lot of people are really frustrated, and I totally get it. But if we had more, we have a wonderful free bus system. If we were able to increase that a little bit, and have maybe a few park-and-ride options for people that are in those other weird wonky places of town, not just around CSU, people would be able to jump on the bus, commute in, and then get to the heart of town or get to their job without having to drive their car, take up a parking space, worry about the two hours, do they need to move their car at lunch, like what's happening? That is something that would be both beneficial for families and also for just in general safety here in the city. The fewer cars that are driving around, the more safety there is for bikes and pedestrians and the scooters, and all of the ways that people are getting around now that are more environmentally friendly and more cost-effective, quite frankly. That's, that's where mine, mine jumped to for that question.
Well, and I love the answer, because it, not only does it push towards the need for a greater and more sustainable model for our transit, but it talks about active solutions that can be, you know, paired with partnerships or other things like that. I think it's really, really an important and hopeful vision of our future. Talk to me about, and we've talked a lot about affordable housing, but knowing that Montava has been stalled out by, you know, water considerations, and that water is a big consideration for any potential growth project, how do you want to approach water and growth planning towards Fort Collins' future from city council?
So, so the water question is really difficult, because city council doesn't have a ton of power over like exactly what water we're getting. We really are at the mercy of the state with water rights, and then there's like three local organizations that kind of control water here. So when I think of the question, and I think of how city council can better equip us to have water security moving forward, what really comes to mind is that we need to be getting really creative with non-drinking residential water usage. And how are we looking at lawn care? How are we looking at just general maintenance to utilize natural resources over our filtered clean drinking water? So I know that my, where I live uses rainwater irrigation. I'd like to see that become more of the norm in our communities, because I absolutely understand too, you can't just say, we're not going to maintenance yards anymore because it's a fire risk. So we need that rainwater, we need to be doing something. I'd like to see with some of our new developments going towards zero-scaping whenever possible. I also think that we need to, we have some green grants for residential homeowners and people here in the city. So I think primarily it's looking at putting electric into your homes, so like your heat pumps, as well as some solar panels. I would really like to see some grants go in for like low-flow water use appliances in people's homes, so that if they have an older home that's using a lot of water, we're able to help subsidize people making those changes into their own spaces. Those programs, I believe, also apply to landlords who have registered with the city through like a recent program and want to update their units too. So this has the potential to benefit a lot of sectors of the community. I will also say, as an end note, I would be very reticent to approve or move forward with any new or expanding data centers here in the city. If water is what we are concerned about, they pull, I think, three times more water per footprint than a house would. And quite frankly, I think that it should be prioritized towards people over corporations, because it is a very valuable resource. So looking at what kind of creative solutions we can do, as well as protecting against corporate interests that would be sucking up what would be residential water.
Can you talk to me about, we've talked a little bit about disenfranchised communities and the people of Fort Collins. What is your understanding of the needs of the LGBTQIA+ community and its, and the visitors to our community in that, in that space?
So I've actually been working with like a nonprofit who has been trying to conduct surveys within the community, and not just Fort Collins even, but has also gone down to Loveland and surrounding communities. Um, and not just Fort Collins even, but has also gone down to Loveland and surrounding communities um to get information about what genuine steps could the city take uh to make these communities feel heard, make them feel safe, and what should we be doing? Um, the city opted not to become a trans sanctuary city, and I understand that there was a lot of nuance in that decision. Um, I do think that there is power in even just um creating that label for the community, um, because it is a level of acceptance that I don't think is typically seen, and I think that that's important. Um, I also know that at the state level, we have really good laws and protections so that uh people who come here for for healthcare um or come here and and change their name um cannot be essentially sent back or tried in another state. Um, so I think that it's really important that we as council people show our support for procedures like that so that our state legislatures know that we want those to continue and that they can't be on the chopping block, that those must be protected at all costs. Um, I also think that as we look at what are we funding in public services, that we need to look at uh reproductive healthcare and and gender affirming care um to see if we can protect the institutions that provide those to the community, um, support them and also ensure that they have a continued basis and funding to to support our community in that way. Um, I also know that we have program, we should have programs um addressing how are we approaching that kind of education with kids in foster care? Um, how, what are they getting? Because uh schools in Colorado can opt yes or no, and and like it's not necessarily across the board for that kind of education. Um, and so making sure that the city is deeply involved and invested in and also helping those communities um so that the LGBTQ youth isn't getting left behind in those ways.
This will be our first major election using ranked choice voting, and even though it's not in play specifically in District Five, because there's only two candidates. Um, can you tell me a little bit about how your campaign is working to keep the election positive and and uh any ways that you see uh, you know, a cross section of of support between you and uh what you uh Amy is working towards as well?
So there were, there were a few points there. So with ranked choice voting, we have been a a huge part of our campaign and what we've been doing, especially as we're canvassing, is making sure that people know that they can register to vote, how to register to vote, what ranked choice voting is, have they seen the city's info? Um, and kind of getting them jazzed about it because again, it's not us this time, but it will be in the future and it's really important for people to be involved municipally. Um, so that has been super fun and it's been really encouraging to see people also get excited about it. Um, and then in general, with uh kind of how we have been staying positive, I I think that it's just incredibly important in general that Amy and I bring different life experience and skills to the table. Um, I think one of the things that has been really, really lovely to see across the board and across the city is that a lot of people have identified the same issues and the same things that are incredibly important to Fort Collins. And I think no matter which way these elections go, that really bodes well, because if everyone can can agree on the consensus of we need to move in this direction, isn't that great? That never happens, actually. So we have this situation where everyone wants to work and fix these very genuine issues that are are kind of like, if we don't do something now, I don't know when we're gonna have another chance to really turn back the clock and and shift course. Um, and I think the difference comes into play with maybe how we would go about getting to those solutions. Um, and so it's it's a really interesting opportunity for people in District Five to look at two candidates and kind of assess what pathway towards these goals is going to be most aligned with what I care about? Or how would I prioritize things? Like if I had, if if John down the street had a magic wand and could decide um exactly what to do in what order? We now have two candidates that he can look and go, is this person that did we have the same thought? Like, are we wanting to do the same thing? And that's just a lot of fun.
Are there any voter groups or views that you're intentionally not seeking to court or be associated with during your campaign?
Um, not necessarily. I mean, I think the the reality is, is that I'm just very outspoken about what I do believe and and the the things that I'm aligned with. Um, and so rather than focusing on, oh, I'm definitely not gonna talk to X, Y, or Z, there's a few, you know, there's a few things where I'm, I'm like, you know, I'm probably not ever going to totally agree with the person who doesn't want to get rid of Tabor, let's say. But I would obviously have a conversation with them, like what about keeping Tabor is important to that person? And is there common ground with, are they worried their taxes are gonna go up? And can I, can we through like looking at what a progressive tax system might look like, come to an agreement that actually their taxes would go down, like they'd be okay? And they'd have more money in their pocket and more money in their public schools. Like you can bridge those gaps with people. Um, so, yeah.
What would voters be surprised to learn about you? And if you're having a hard time thinking of something, what what is, what was your weirdest job? That's the alternate question we've been given.
Um, my dad had a very weird job. He was paid by the Park Service to uh take care of squirrels for a while in Canada. Um, but I no, I, I suppose, well, and I think this has come with being very open about my beliefs and and my experiences is that I'm very open about the fact that like I have a physical disability. Not many people would would guess that when they look at me or um, I I'm very open that uh like I have family that immigrated from Syria. Um, and I'm, I'm pasty, but um, that that's genuinely like a a part of of what has shaped me. Um, and uh, yeah, I I suppose I think maybe it's that I I I'm just, I'm just a person. Um, I I think that
You heard it here first.
Yes.
City Council candidate Zoella Lane is a person and not a robot, not a construct. This is
Yeah, that's actually of all the questions you sent me, the one that threw me off because I I don't know what what I don't feel like there's any like great big secret or like I don't have any like hidden special skills. I'm just a person.
Love it. Uh, that that's a perfectly valid answer. Uh, Zo- Zoella, if you could have any superpower to help your community, what would it be?
I could think of two, um, but I'm gonna go with what like my very gut instinct was, and I think it would very much be that um, i- if people are fighting or if they are like very strongly disagreeing, that I could like wrap up the other person's like opinion or or perspective and just like send it to that person and it like clicks in their brain and like, that doesn't mean that that changes their mind, but they genuinely like like a click a button and they immediately know that the person they're arguing about, like this is what's actually at the root of why they disagree. And you do that for each other and then at least you're at a point with someone where there's there is that base level understanding and kind of knowing what's at stake for the other person as they navigate an issue.
Empathy is a superpower.
Yeah.
Love it. Uh, who do you consider a role model in public service and what have you learned from them?
Um, so honestly, my grandmother. Um, so my grandmother dedicated a huge amount of her life to uh working in other countries to develop sustainable development plans um for countries so that uh they could build ethically responsibly without leaving some of the most impoverished people behind. Um, and there it and it was never her going in and saying, I'm gonna fix it. It was always like, here's your uncle from Bangladesh, here's your uncle and aunt and and here's like the family that like we still send cards to because like they are family. It it's really, she embodied giving back to both like her community and other communities in such like a personable and selfless way that I just, I can't help but admire her. And yeah, she's my favorite person.
What's one piece of advice that you've received and you didn't follow, but you wish you had?
I don't think there is a a piece of advice that I didn't follow and supremely regret specifically because when I was very young, my grandmother actually was the person who really looked at me and was like, the worst someone could say is no, or the worst you can do is fail. And then for the most part, like you just pick yourself up and try again. And so she really raised me to think of uh problems as opportunities and to to really put myself out there and and take leaps. Like, I don't think I would have moved to the States. I I wouldn't have been applying for those jobs. I wouldn't have leaped in the way I did had it not been for her. Um, and and it really is, it's her other thing was was follow what you're passionate about. And that's seen me through career privates and in different like parts of nonprofits and switching my work to look at different mechanisms and then coming here to Fort Collins and living in different places and and really hitting my stride at at CSU and really falling in love with the the community, not just there, but in general here in Fort Collins. Um, and I I think that would be advice that I'd want to pass on to people is that if you're doing what you're passionate about or if you're you're finding some way to incorporate that, even if it's not your day job, like that is incredible. That is what life is about.
What do you hope Fort Collins will look like 20 years from now?
I'm really hoping that it 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 looks somewhat similar uh to what it is now, but the the people that want to buy a home have have bought a home, have grown up. Uh, maybe me and a whole bunch of my friends are dropping our kids off at school. Um, and you know, the trees are lovely. It's a beautiful fall day. We we haven't uh had any close wildfires in the past few years. That would be nice. Um, and and just a a lot more of what's makes our community beautiful today.
Zoella, we've reached the point of the interview where I'm gonna ask you some rapid fire questions. Uh, and whatever comes to the top of mind first is just fine. What is your favorite coffee shop?
Mugs.
Favorite brewery?
I don't drink.
Uh, favorite park?
Uh, City Park.
Would you rather go on a horse tooth hike or a Pooter Trail bike ride?
Horse tooth.
Favorite book?
Uh, anything by Anthony Ryan. He's a fantasy author.
Phone call, text, or email if somebody is trying to get ahold of you?
Text.
Would you consider yourself an early bird or a night owl?
Probably a night owl.
Do you have a favorite nonprofit in town?
Uh, Animal Friends Alliance.
Tell us about what they do.
Uh, so they help essentially with uh rehoming and fostering animals. Um, and then they hold a whole bunch of adoption events around town. So if you are interested in having a fuzzy friend, be sure to check them out. And also, if you're not sure that you're ready for pet ownership, but you'd like to test it out, signing up to volunteer and foster and being a temporary home for an animal who needs it is an absolutely great way to get involved and see if it's something that you might like long term, um, while also being able to give back to a community that desperately needs it.
If you had to pick one word to describe Fort Collins, what would it be?
Probably home.
If you had to, if you could snap your fingers and change one thing about Fort Collins, what would it be?
I think we'd have light rail.
Snap your fingers, please. I really want to see that happen. Um, I know these are supposed to be rapid fire, but man, we can wish, can't we?
I know.
If if you weren't running for office this year, what would you be doing?
I, man, I don't know. I think I just, I'd be just as busy at work, except I'd have volunteered for about six more positions. Um,
Zoella, is there anything else that you would like the listener to know about you or your campaign?
I think I just want to say that I am so, I feel so fortunate to be part of this community. Um, and I really hope that other people see the vision of uh where Fort Collins can be and what we need to do to get there um and actually get out and vote. Um, municipal elections on like uh off years, so when it's not coinciding with the presidential election, tend to have a much smaller turnout. And I'm I'm gonna put on my 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 little democracy hat and it's it's so important that people get out because there's ballot initiatives with with different taxes that might be uh implemented, but they, some of them go to great things or you might feel very strongly that you don't want the money to go to something. Um, and your voice isn't going to be heard unless you actually fill out that ballot. Um, even if you just fill out the ballot for the one thing you really care about and leave the rest blank, it's much better than not turning it in at all. So please make sure that you get involved and and get voting either by mail in before November 4th or on November 4th on the actual election day um and and have a a say in which direction your community moves forward.
Where can we learn more about you and your campaign?
Uh, so you can learn more about me at my website. It is zoeellane.com, so that's spelled Z O E L L E L A N E dot com. Um, we also have an Instagram, uh Zoella for Fort Collins. Um, and yeah, we we post there about volunteering and and some of the work that we're doing um as well as just in general information on the website. If you'd like to give it a look, I I highly encourage you to do so.
Amazing. Well, Zoella, uh, I I so appreciate having you on the show today. And uh I I echo your sentiments about democracy and voting in municipal elections, one of the best things you can do to have a direct impact on your community. So uh, I I hope you had fun today.
I really did. Thank you.
Well, thanks for joining me to talk about the issues and I hope you join us here again at Dear Fort Collins to learn more about the issues and the candidates and uh learning about all of the cool things that you can vote on this November, and we'll hope to see you on the next episode.